...or hitting any mandate relief, that's where we're stuck.
If we get a tough policy, that's really what we probably need to do, like eliminate the budget, make it sustainable for a longer period of time, right?
Absolutely.
And that's what we're going to go with, more and more, we just can't do that this time?
Well, it's going to take all... Part of the problem with that is they'd be capitalist pose without any mandate relief. So, you know, you're living here, but all the other stuff still has to apply. So, that's part of the problem. But even some of the mandate relief that was proposed wouldn't take effect for years down the road. I mean, they're talking about another pension tier now, and, you know, we're not hiring teachers, unfortunately. We're laying teachers go up, so that pension tier isn't going to help us for, you know, ten years down the road, if that's...
And you think that's probably the negotiation, right?
No.
It's not, or is it?
Pension is mandated by the state.
Even the negotiations with the teachers, though, is that what the board has to, right? You got a number?
Not...we do negotiate with the teachers, but pension portion of it is state mandated, not open negotiation between the two. But we do negotiate salaries and negotiate help.
Can measure part of what you like in an hour?
Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone. So, um, we can talk about our numbers today, or if you'd like to, numbers left and right. And what I want to do is present to you guys a different number, and that is the eight-hundred-plus signatures that many people have worked very hard to collect, um, all the people who are getting from GLS. And what I want to ask you to do is not to take this whole figure as a thing, and make it feel like garbage, but I want to ask you to do is think about what these eight-hundred-plus numbers of signatures represent, um, and think about the people behind these numbers, and think about the kids behind these numbers, and the stories behind these numbers. For example, the many working mothers that can barely juggle things as it is, and alone having two kids who didn't have school, or the parents who've just moved to this neighborhood here in the past year, uh, because they thought they were falling into a certain school system, and now they're going to have one kid in Nassau, one kid in Hagan, and one kid in their shoes for. The parents who have fathers commuting two hours to the city, just so that he can stop at his school district. The parents who called Saint Martins to inquire, got enrolled for next year, and the lady on the other end of the phone said, "Are you from Spacken Hill?" Because you're the same person I talked to today. I'm just asking you to not look at us as men, or the people who care most about our children. I know that you say you guys have the kids' best interests at heart, but nobody cares about our kids more than we do, and we're asking you to consider the reasons why we're against this, and the reason of why we're asking you to just include us in probably the biggest decision that this school has ever borne. Thank you.
Can I have additional copies for anyone in the audience that they want to... Hello, my name is Ian Creedman. I live at twenty-one Cathy Road. My son is in kindergarten, and I also have a two-year-old. Dear Spacken Hill Board of Education, Dr. Powell, district employees, parents, guardians, and community members, let me start by telling you all, everyone here, how much I appreciate your dedication to this district and the students attending our schools. I'm here to present a proposal to ease the stress that transition to grade-level schooling would have on the current kindergarten class at Hagan Elementary School. Under the current proposal, these students would have to undergo three school transitions in four years. For many students who attended preschool, including my son, the current plan would cause them to transition schools four times in five years. Now, the board already approved a one-year phase-in for students in two other grades. This tells me that the board and the district are already aware of the impacts and instability that can result from school transitions, and is doing its best to look after our children. But for those in the audience who are not aware, numerous studies have shown that school transitions could result in declines in academic performance, loss of self-esteem, loss of motivation, emotional problems, social problems, and psychological problems. Research also shows that you can top schools in benefit by reducing or eliminating transitions. And although not every student will suffer negative effects from transitions, it seems unwise to expose our youngest students to even the potential for negative impact for so many years in a row. Now, there is good news. Based on the documents provided to me by the district, implementing a two-year phase-in plan for the current Hagan kindergarten students would not only eliminate several of these transitions, but it would cost the district nothing, or nearly nothing. These documents indicate that the district could still, if necessary, eliminate the teaching positions and staff positions proposed in the recent budget. There are zero apparent costs to a two-year phase-in for our kindergarteners. Furthermore, Hagan also seems to have enough space to keep these students at Hagan for the next two years. After that time, the students would age into the original plan for grade-level schools and remain at Hagan until middle school. The phase-in would be finished after the two thousand three, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Class sizes would also not be significantly impacted by such a plan. Based on the district's documents, classes would only grow by about one or two students at Hagan as compared to the grade-level school plan, and at Nassau, they would drop by only one or two students as compared to the grade-level school plan. As far as I can tell, this plan would be a win-win for the district, the students, and the parents. There's no reason I can see why such a plan would not be in the best interests of everyone in this room and our kindergarten children, nor has the district provided any arguments against a two-year phase-in for the current Hagan kindergarten students. Arish, to paraphrase, you told us at the last meeting that you don't think it's the board's job to micromanage the district, but only to provide gentle guidance to the vote. Ralph, at the last meeting, you said that the board wants to work with the community to take the district's proposals and make them better. When I met with Dr. Powell, she indicated that this was still an open issue. She also told me that I should bring this proposal to the board. This indicates to me that Dr. Powell believes that this is exactly the type of issue that the board should consider. Not only does this proposal make the district's plan better, but as I said, it's a win-win with no cost to the district. As I've explored this issue, I've talked with many people, including the parents and guardians of Hagan kindergarten students. Six days ago, I also created an online petition and contacted the parents and guardians of Hagan kindergarten students. Not only have I found enormous support from them, but I've received signatures from fifty-four individuals all in just six days. By estimates, this represents the parents and guardians of about thirty-three of the fifty-three kindergarten students for whom I had contact information. Six days, that's a sixty-two percent response rate. Clearly, the overwhelming majority of kindergarten parents would support this proposal. I've distributed copies of this letter and the petition to members of the board and the administration. I've also printed copies for anyone in the audience who wishes to receive one. At this point, I want to ask, what's next? What do we need to do to make this happen? I would love to get on the board's official agenda, but so far, I've been unable to figure out how to make this happen, and I would love to meet with any member of the board privately to further discuss this. But please tell me your thoughts, your responses, and your advice, and how to proceed with this proposal. Thank you very much.
Having already met with you, so we have been, um, and what I did is I went to superintendent and asked for an exact couple of questions, few questions. One, can the facility handle it? That's number one, because if it can't, then there's no further reason to look any further. And what costs would be associated with it. So, I've got those answers tonight, um, just before the meeting. So, um, Mr. McCall is not here this evening, so he hasn't had the opportunity to take a look at them. Um, he's at a...he's on a vacation that's somewhere, anyway, that's gone for over a year or so, couldn't change it. So, basically, when that number, maybe that's seventeen thousand dollars, is two-tenths of a teacher, that would be the difference. And so, as you say, pretty small. So, that's something the board will have to discuss. It is a board decision. Um, it's costs, so that's us. So, it's, um, and that's something we will probably be taking up at the next meeting, um, to discuss how we feel about whether to phase in the kindergarten. And I do understand, um, the perspective, and it took me maybe longer than I should have to figure it out, but, um, I...we did allow some change for the two rates if they opted to, to, um, not have two, change this immediately to transition. And I can understand having kindergarten, you can consider transitioning into the school as a transition, and then transitioning is not, quote-unquote, Spacken Hill transition necessarily. Everybody has one of them from either a pre-K or a home or something, but that truly is a transition, and it does take a child a while to get used to, um, to the school and the environment, and get seated in that kindergarten class. I can see where you're coming from, I understand it. I, you know, that could definitely be considered two transitions, and it is something that I think we should look at. I can't tell you what this decision will be, um, but next meeting will probably be the discussion.
So, at the next meeting, I can expect a serious discussion on this?
Yes, well, there'll be a discussion. I mean, we'll talk it over amongst ourselves. I don't know how solidify other board members' thoughts, their opinions, um, but we all received the information tonight.
Well, you have my contact information, and I would love to meet with any of you who are working with you, and if you have the time, and I'm very flexible. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How much did you say you was going to save with GLS each year, like your current savings on that?
It's, uh, it's different each year. Overall, you would do about three hundred thousand after three.
All right, so would you say, what, like, a hundred thousand a year around there?
More or less, yeah.
Well, it's nine hundred thousand total, but a difference of three hundred thousand between the two months.
Right. So, now, we did this bus run, right, around the sixty-five thousand, was that for a year?
Yes.
Okay, so then that would take away from...so we're almost even here.
If we were to do that, I mean, the downside, that that was just something that's looked at, not as...
But that's going to put up to a vote, right?
It would have to be if we were even entertaining.
Okay.
I know, I mean, my opinion wouldn't be, only because, number two, it's not only is it two bus runs, but they're not able, because they're within a certain distance, so there's not even any state reinforcement happening.
And then, I have another question. A question is, uh, the kids coming from Nassau, they're going to stay here for the after-school. Who's going to be sure that Nassau's going to kindergarten, actually, who's going to be sure he gets off at the right bus? I know he's just got a tag on there, but out the bus driver is going to drive the bus, and then search all the buses, see if that train off the bus is supposed to be on the bus. How's that going?
Well, the first couple of weeks, we would have extra staff who would be able to do that kind of checking, to make sure the bus drivers did that kind of checking, to make sure nobody's left behind or getting off at the wrong place. The hope is that after a couple of weeks, the child would become accustomed to the right stuff.
The thing is, it's like in my situation, um, my kid might stay two or three days a week. Now, my current first grader now does that a couple days a week. We've already had one since where she got the bus, and she went to work. So, if she does it, it's not as big of a deal, because she's smarter than that early, kind of, forget what she has to do if an emergency happened to mom and dad at home, but my kindergarten's not going to... If he gets dropped off home, and the bus drivers, they don't wait to see if there's a parent, this time, mine, ready for a parent-teacher kid, they just leave. So, I guess, you know, I think you might want to have a honest on that bus.
Are the bus drivers supposed to, uh, give your attention to someone?
You're lucky the bus drivers are tired, you know. It's realistic, it's not realistic. That's not realistic. It's a nice theory, but it's not realistic. So, that's all. If we did go for a vote, maybe add that sixty-five thousand, and we're calling it somewhere around forty, fifty thousand, and I was saving from GLS, but I'm worried for the bus driver, like, if we put this whole GLS, high GLS issue through the vote.
Change of distances required by logical...
Okay. Why not just put this whole thing on? It seems like everybody... Is there anybody here that's from GLS?
Let me, I got one, I just want to...can I get the bus driver number that your child's dropped off? When that happened, I called, and the bus lady who was in charge...
Be completely deliberate.
When that happened, the lady, um, who was in charge of the buses, was on the bus the next stop the next day, and she explained to the bus driver, you know, with the rules, and also not the back-up of the bus, a lot of the kids are trying to get in their seats.
Right, but that doesn't answer my question, I just wanted to know the bus number, so we can address that.
I don't know the bus number, but it's been addressed. It's been taken care of.
It's four, that's history? And that needs to be addressed.
I'm just saying, you know, with all these transitions, it's...some of it is still the drives. It's just, you know, I don't think it's realistic for the bus driver to, uh, you know, expect the bus driver to... I'm done. That's all I have to say.
Rajiv Chalda, where it is we stole, right? So, I'm going back to the setting numbers. First year, it was showing seventy-eight thousand. Second, between GLS versus not GLS. Second year, around fifty-one thousand, and third year, around ninety-five thousand. So, if you add up, it comes out around two hundred twenty-five thousand. And that's what it shows off top. If I do the math, eight eighty-nine minus sixty-five is around two hundred twenty-five. And I think I heard you three times, you said compounded savings is three hundred thou...
Plus the thousand, the difference between the two. Okay, so it's two twenty-five.
Well, if you look at the compounded savings, if you do the math, it's four hundred seventy-seven thousand. So, how does two hundred twenty-five become four hundred four seventy-four? Can you tell me the rate of return, maybe, is it?
The first year, the savings is four hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars.
The difference, the difference is seventy...
Let me take you through this. The first year, the savings with GLS is four hundred fifty-eight thousand. We are going to have that savings for three years, with the exception of the three items at the bottom, the facilities work, the moving expenses, and the instructional materials. We did not consider those monitoring expenses. So, you're going to have that four hundred fifty-eight thousand-dollar savings each year over the three years of the plan. Go to the next slide, please. The second year and the third year, you're going to have savings of two hundred twenty-one thousand dollars, and the third year, you're going to have the savings of a hundred ninety-thousand. And if you add those together, that's where you're going to two hundred ninety-two thousand.
So, if you add those two together, that comes to eighty-nine, and that's what you're showing about with grade-level schooling, your total savings, just straight math is eight eighty-nine, and then compounded comes to two hundred... I have a simple question, if you just go back and add the three numbers...
It's eight eighty-nine, but let's just make it...
That was eight eighty-nine, it's not two eighty.
Let's make it, I'll make it very simple. If you cut one position, say you cut one position for a year, and that is going to be six twenty thousand dollars. After three years, you're saving sixty thousand dollars.
So, you're seeing the seventy-eight thousand, or that four hundred thousand of the...
You saved it three times.
You saved it three times, so then your projections are incorrect. So, you're to its previous number, plus this year's number.
Hi, there. My name's Laura Collins. I live at twenty-eight Campbell's Road. I have currently a kindergartner and a fourth-grade student. Um, the first thing that I would like to ask is, I just would like a little bit of an explanation on the librarian situation, and how, how it's being cut, and what it's going to look like next year for the elementary schools, as far as library work.
Essentially, um, next year, we're only cutting the test. We're going to keep the Hagan librarian in Hagan the whole day, and the Nassau librarian will be there half a day. And the way the schedule works is that we are able to fit library periods, where students actually go in for instruction, into that half-day. And the other half of the day, there will be a library monitor, just for the sake of kids who come in to take out books and that sort of thing, so that the library will be open all day, but the halftime sessions would be there for the instructional part of the day. In the following year, when it goes down by an entire librarian, there, the schedules are going to be more balanced, because right now, this is accounting for the extra second grade sections that are remaining at Hagan next year. When we balance out the sections a little bit better, we'll be able to have one librarian, just like one art teacher, who will spend the morning in one school and the afternoon in the other, and they will accomplish those teaching periods within that half-day. And then the library monitor will reverse and cover the part of the day that the library can...
Thank you. I would also just like to make a comment, that, um, I want to acknowledge that I and my husband have discussed several times, that the board members are volunteers, that you're not getting paid to do this, and I would not like, I would not relish being in a position. So, I'd just like to acknowledge that I realize this is very difficult. I do not support, you know, grade-level schooling, but I want to acknowledge that I know you're in a tough place. And I feel like, you know, this has been an issue for, I mean, several years now, where we've at least been discussing it, and it keeps coming back to the table, and then the public outcry, you know, is so, such that we look at it again, and then it kind of dies down, then we look at it again. So, I feel like at this point, I'm a little bit anxious that, are we looking at this because we're digging our heels in? And I mean that from both sides. You know, are we digging our heels in because we're so emotionally attached to this that it's hard to see, you know, the forest through the trees? Is the opposing side, if you will, digging their heels in because this has been going on for so long? I just want to make the point that we really are in this together, I mean, we really are. And it all comes down to what we're here for. We keep saying it's for the kids, it's for the kids. It is for the kids. It is for their success. And I just, you know, I would just like to make the point that I wish some of the opposition could maybe melt a little bit, and we could really look at this from a cooperative, you know, maybe look at it again, and we look at it again, and talk about it as a community. I know there's been, you know, quite an outcry for a vote, and, you know, that's a difficult thing to consider, I'm sure, but if that's a possibility, I think that would, that would be the ultimate teamwork, if you look at it together, and you make a choice together. So, that's just the point I wanted to make. Thank you.
I just have a question on the transportation plan, and I just have a hard time understanding. On the way to school, we have sort of this hybrid plan, like kids go to whatever school is closest, and then they go to their, you know, destiny school. On the way home, they get west direction, but I don't understand, that's why they can't get directly to school as they do in the everyday, I'm not understanding one of it.
The committee spent, um, a lot of time on your explanation. Um, one of the reasons that we would not, in order to be efficient with the buses and the mileage, and not having stops in the morning a few minutes apart, you already have teachers in the buildings to greet the students in the morning. In the afternoons, to go home, if you want to go home the same way, the teachers would be in the choir, just still be in one of the other buildings, waiting for the bus to come from one building to the other. So, the morning routing is more efficient, and that's why it was done that way.
Do you not, I mean, I guess I think it's confusing, you know, and addition of, um, day before the average school, I mean, it is every day, every place, and on the way to school, you have a different way of heading to school than, I guess, you know, why not be able to bus the kids directly to home or school in the morning?
Because in the morning, it's quicker and more efficient to do it, perhaps, than in the morning. I just saw this slide, somebody asked if the buses are longer present, if there are no teachers at the schools, and what happens after.
June Gill, Hall of Fame. Swan mentioned in the last week that democracy, sometimes you win, and sometimes you lose, or at least democracy in your participating. I think that's what we see here, we have a five-room, eight-hundred people, side names, I'm a physician, and it was a three-to-two vote, and I'm sorry, I'm, I don't know if the three you voted for the grade-level school, if that's what you campaigned on, I'm sorry, if I misread, that's shame on me. I should have been an informed voter. I think what we see, I'm looking at the sign, it's all about trust, and I think there's, maybe, for some reason, there's a lack of trust. I remember coming here in September and October, and this, the board said, "Well, look into a lot of things, we're not going to rush into a vote," and then all of a sudden, beginning in December, there was a vote. I think we lost a lot of community's trust. I've looked at the numbers, appreciate you putting all the differences between comparing grade-level school and keeping it as it is. I had a time to look at that, and a lot of people, I've asked questions that I had. And my thought is, one way that you could regain the trust, and from one of the slides here, I guess it only takes forty-five days to set this up at a cost of thirty-two hundred dollars, maybe that's a dollar per household, is to have a referendum, April fourteenth, in which you let us decide as a community what we want. Again, it's grade-level schools, but if it's a vote, and I get outvoted, it's a more direct democracy, than having three people decide it. Can we have a referendum in forty-five days?
I'm okay with that, except we're here to...I think, in my opinion, is, I understand the emotion, and I understand where it's coming from, and I would rather, in some ways myself, not have grade-level schools. That being said, I voted for grade-level schools, and the reason I voted for grade-level schools is not tax law, it's this tax cap that is imposed, we have to look several years out. And in looking several years out, the only way I foresee us being able to make these projections, and yes, we can negotiate with you to reduce benefits, we can hope state aid goes up, we can hope some mandate relief comes, but the only way in my power to see a possibility of making these changes and staying within this cap is to go to grade-level school, where classes can be balanced across grade levels, and we have ability to cut two or four section grade level if need, with two schools, that basically is impossible. So, this is in the process of setting up that, and we are phasing in a couple of classes, but by the time it's fully implemented, or in the time where there's going to be some necessity for some change, and the other hope that I have is this understanding of what's happening to schools in general is felt across the state, and it's felt, you know, and you can read the paper, like I can, with every district on it, with what they're trying to do to try and live within this cap. And I'm hoping there's going to be a rising settlement where that law is amended or repealed to at least the level that is sustainable for school districts. But I can't bet on any of that happening. The only thing I can do personally is to try and make it give us the most programs with the most ability for us to change in a very short period of time, because we didn't have a three-year phase-in of a tax cap. It was overnight. Um, so, these are things that are very hard to work with, and being able at the elementary school to take a look at a class size and say, "Oh, we need five in this one, oh, we got to go to four in that one, because that enrollment's a little less," gives me a lot more ability... more ability to trim costs than I would otherwise. To me, there are some other benefits to grade level schools that people seem to overlook. Yes, there is an extra transition grant, I agree. I also think that the transition at the middle school, which is our most difficult transition, and statewide tends to be a very difficult time going into a loss of test scores statewide, will be much easier, because I, I personally think some of the reason that these K five, K eight schools are decent in scoring is because they don't have a mixed children. There's no new inputs into that school. You're with the same kids from kindergarten through eighth grade or fifth grade, and we mix at the middle school, and I think most districts do, and I think that could be a big reason why statewide that the scores drop in middle school. It's, it's a tug of war. There's other issues. Kids are getting to a certain age and things as well, so, but I think that is also a part of it. I mean, rolling out common core standards with all same teachers in the same school, professional development, having meeting times in the morning. All this is an advantage. Principals that are only going to have to worry about two, three grade levels in trying to figure out where our strengths are and where our weaknesses are and fixing them instead of six grade levels. So I, I think there are some real benefits to grade level schools. Is there an issue? Yes, there is transition. I'll be the first one to admit it. If you could do without transition, I'd love it, but with the cost and the cap, I don't see a way to do it. So, I mean, that's my point on grade level schools, that's why I ended up going for. It was a tough decision, nobody took the decision lightly. Some didn't make that decision from the very last minute because they were so unsure. It's not, it, so that's why I say, no, I, I need to fiscally keep the district where it needs to be, and until other things come about that could change, this is the only thing that's in my ability to do.
And I can see your perspective, and I'm sure you, you've heard the perspective of a lot of us for many months now. And that's why I feel a referendum would be the most fair way of letting the community judge the different perspectives. If you trust us in a referendum on the high school, on the high school leaders, I think you can trust the community with this decision as well. Thank you.
(Inaudible). And for spending much time carefully reviewing the grade level schools implementation plan and other documents, I fail to see a well-established plan, and I don't see how the shift had any real benefits for our children. To begin with, the whole background of the plan is very misleading and underhanded. From citing how the committee found there were benefits to children going to grade level schools and neglecting to include how the grade level school committee's two recommendations, heat neighborhood schools, and develop a plan for addressing future enrollment issues were ignored, to the fact that Dr. Powell organized six committees comprised mainly of employees to meet during the summer of two thousand and eleven to look into grade level schools again with no community involvement, when the community thought after the committee's findings were presented just a year and a half ago, that it was over with and a done deal. This shows complete disregard for the community, which has continually supported the school district. Another troubling aspect of the plan is the lack of any academic means of mitigating transitions for our students. While it is commendable that there seems to be many practices in place to help our teachers who will be laid off, I'd like to see the same type of attention paid to individual students. In place for parents are parent coffees and a completely condescending workshop for parents entitled "Coping with Change and Resiliency." What the administration fails to realize is that the reason many parents are upset by this change is that their children are upset, and not only about changing schools, but about being separated from their siblings. How can splitting the families apart at such a young age be seen as a good thing? One thing that I've read is that change can be good. It can help kids to cope as they get older. Five through eight-year-old children do not need to learn how to cope with change or how to be resilient. What they need is stability, which comes from in part forming a close and long-lasting relationship with their school, with their teachers and staff, and by being able to share these experiences with their siblings. That is the environment in which they will thrive, not one in which they're continually struggling to adjust to an unfamiliar setting, away from siblings and familiar teachers which they find uncomfortable. The administration is completely disconnected from the needs of our youngest students. Someone's already addressed the Hagan kindergarters, so I won't go there again. But in addition, the lack of any type of academic transition plan for the transition between second and third grade is irresponsible educational practice. Research clearly states that that, that the transition from second to third grade represents a central academic shift for many students. Formalized testing begins and students move from learning to read to reading to learn. Does it seem to be sound educational policy to have students not only undergoing this type of academic transition, but also a physical one as well? Add to that the complete lack of any type of academic transitional practices that have been placed by the administration at this point, and I am not optimistic about the educational outcome or the well-being of these students. Responsible transitional planning practices, practices that have been discussed in literature between second and third grade include class looping, providing opportunities throughout the year for second and third grade students to become buddies such as reading buddies and writing buddies, providing time for second and third grade teachers to collaboratively plan and develop units of study year-round, among other things. Many of these practices are next to impossible to implement in second and third grade teachers in different buildings. A final observation I would like to, to make is the fact that many of the reasons why board members voted in favor of grade level schools is quickly becoming a falsehood. First, there's the supposed benefit of increased curriculum alignment. It is my understanding that common planning time among grade level teachers, due to the continual changes to the transportation plan, has been reduced to twenty minutes in the morning, which is doubtfully enough time for five teachers to collaborate effectively. In addition, due to the current four-day special schedule, only four of the five grade level teachers could collaborate to align curriculum. So how exactly is this increased curriculum alignment supposed to happen? This was cited as a concern in the October twenty-six, two thousand and nine GLS committee minutes, and it was never addressed. Second, we have at least two board members who cited keeping class sizes small is a benefit of going to grade level schools. Since we don't want twenty-five in a class again, the truth is all grade level schools does is allow twenty-five plus in a classroom to become a reality. Looking at the three-year budget, we'll be looking at twenty-five to twenty-seven in a class in upcoming years. In fact, that is the only way it saves money by laying off more teachers, resulting in increased class sizes. So then what? How will grade level schools sustain the district after two or three years? It won't, because you can't cut anymore at the elementary level. All it allows for is by cutting the teaching staff, staff to the bone at the elementary level, resulting in instability in the teaching staff and instruction. These teachers will not only continually be asked to adjust to teaching new grades in many cases as their colleagues will be laid off, but to adjust to increased class sizes as well. Some teachers will be adjusting to having their class size double over the span of two years. Grade level schools does not solve any problems, it appears as if it only creates new ones. It is clear there needs to be another way. In addition, at this point, we'd be utilizing twelve classrooms in a building that houses thirty-one and thirteen classrooms in a building that houses twenty-two. What sense does this make? Due to the fact that grade level schools clearly save a minimal amount next year, and in fact may actually cost us more, I urge the board to seriously look at the district's infrastructure in addition to contract negotiations to determine what's the best option for the community, and more importantly, for the students, as well as what makes the most financial sense. It is unfair to put the community and students through this type of upheaval this year only to have us undergo another upheaval two or three years down the road. Subjecting our students to both significantly increased class sizes and more transitions can only have negative educational outcomes. I urge you to consider these educational impacts further. Is the map that you referred to, that shows all the sections that are available, the website is available, now has it been looked into if there is room for fifth graders at Todd? And how to K through four? I mean, just in terms of infrastructure, obviously, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean just close Nassau and stick all the elementary students at K level. Mr. Malphus, do you feel you have classrooms for fifth grade students?
It depends on how things.
Well, I think my point is that I think it's, you know, it needs to all be looked at. You know, we're not, I, I think people who are talking about change in infrastructure don't, aren't necessarily referring to closing Nassau and putting them all in. You know, that's my point. I think everything needs to be looked at.
(Applause).
Hi, my name is Sartini Fortham, thirty-sixth inch, I have a little bit of a T T. Can you please bring up the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirty financial sheet that shows savings of about four hundred and something like that? Can you bring that up? All right, great. So is that, is that a sustained savings over a number of years, or is that like three years, five years, seven years, ten years, one year?
That would definitely sustain.
Sustained for how many years?
Unless enrollment grows.
So can I say that that's the savings that we're going to see every year for the next five years?
Plus the future year's reductions, yes.
So is that one year, two year, or three year? I'm a little weak in math, so I'm trying to understand it a little better.
At least three years.
Three years. So what's, what's the definition of long range planning? Because when I came into this meeting, I saw the subject as long range planning. Means what? Long means what? Five years, seven years, three years, one year?
Right now, honestly, we're looking at three. It's very difficult to plan too much longer because there's so many involves with where we're getting our funds from, the state, et cetera. So it is very difficult, and numbers become very.
So for next three years, we're going to be saving four fifty-eight, and that's four fifty-eight by three, or it's four fifty-eight multiplied by?
Tell me if I'm wrong, that's four fifty-eight for the first year.
Yes.
So that's going to be multiplied by three times for three years, right?
Right, plus additional savings for the second year or third year.
So is that, is that something that you're fairly sure, almost close to a guarantee, or is that a ballpark?
Now, that, that, it, it could vary on specific salary, but it isn't going to be significant.
Okay. Is that supposed to be going down or up? Any estimation? Have you done the worst case analysis or the best case analysis? Because usually, you know, where I'm coming from is, honestly, where I'm coming from is, my job actually requires budget balancing. We work with external customers, I work in technology business, and I work with a lot of customers who present a ten percent challenge every single year. What we try to do is, we always try to look at best case scenario, worst case scenarios, and just to justify my job existence, I actually have to produce numbers which go three years, five years, or something, best case, worst case, right? So what I'm trying to actually look at is, we're all talking of numbers here, and when we talk of numbers, we are going to look at long-term, short-term, best case, worst case. What I'm actually going to see here is, I'm not getting it as warm and fuzzy here, that is it, right, maybe it's going to happen, or is it like, you know, we came up with some numbers, you know, put something in Excel, here we are, this is what's going to happen? And then two years from now, we're back to the drawing board.
The only reason, the reason why you can't get the part of numbers, because we don't know what the impact is. We don't know where the state.
Exactly, that's where I'm, that's where, that's where is my next point. Thank you, Tom, for pointing me to that. Ralph pointed out very correctly that we got a tax gap situation and our hope is we got state aid increases.
Hopefully, most likely it's not.
Exactly, hope. So my point is, we're talking about tax gap, let's start last year. We've been in budget challenge for the last three years, right? Would you agree?
Budget challenge?
Budget challenge. Every single year, when we present a budget, we have a budget which is submitted to the community, and there's a contingency budget. Last three years, can you give me a number how many times we had to switch to the contingency budget? Probably very.
Well, I can tell you this much, there is no more contingency budget.
I understand. Right, right. What I'm trying to say is that every year we've been struggling with a budget. It's always the money that comes into the big question mark. Can we actually look at it more holistically in terms of the root cause?
You have to justify your job.
Yes, yeah, I do that. And that's where we have to justify it. What is the root cause? When somebody comes up to me and says, why do I have to have your job here and not somewhere else? We look at the root cause. Why are you asking me that question? Is somebody pointing a finger at me? And then I justify and I develop a response towards that. This is something that I'm not seeing right now, right? If you look at the budget, if you look at the remediation that we have come up with, example is reduction of enrichment teachers. What if we send kids to school so that they can interact with their peers, they can interact with their teachers, they can have a learning experience, not actively just open up a book and say, two times forward is eight, or six times forward is twelve? It's not about that. We're going to reduce the enrichment programs. What's going to happen with the kids when they grow up? They know, hey, I want a register, and somebody made me five dollars, and this is what I'm going to give back to.
No, we don't, no, we don't dispute any of that, believe me. We're the last group who want to get rid of those problems.
I agree. What I'm trying to say is, tax gap came up last year. Did we not foresee any of the things?
No, it wasn't, it wasn't a definite. They said, they originally said, no, it wasn't going to happen, then quote it was there.
I am, I'm really surprised. If you look up on a lot of analysis.
Pay attention to the state politics, and you found out why it happened. Just read a little bit further to Shale and Silver, and you figure it out.
But the, the thing is, we'll have an offline conversation about it. I'll talk about my experience in the Department of Education in New York City, and I can share some experiences there.
This, this year.
Besides this, one more thing I want to add is, if you talk about whole and state aid, I mean, you planning any actions or anything to be done on that front that we can influence local legislators or Congress anywhere, that this is the big problem. Have we done any efforts? Have you shared this with the community?
In fact, part of the reason really I asked for the three-year plan was so we could present it to our legislators, so they could see exactly the impact to the schools that we have invited Senator Salon to meet with us on that specific topic.
Did you read that?
We just, we sent the line around.
Yesterday.
Last week.
No, we got the letter yesterday.
Do you actually know about this, and how many of us actually know that we're making efforts towards that direction?
I talked about it last week, but I mean, we, we do do that. I go to Albany. I go to Albany frequently, go out frequently, usually once a year to lobby with the legislatures. And we do work with them, but unfortunately, it, it sometimes doesn't seem like it matters a lot, but we keep trying. They, the, but the point of the matter is, this year, we need to cut one point three million dollars to keep it to the tax cap. Grade level schools does not solve that problem. There, there, that is just a piece of what needs to occur to solve that problem.
This is a very big problem, and, and in the last meeting, I actually commented forward that you guys have been doing a lot of homework about it, but seriously, it's not about just, you know, fixing one point three million dollars or GLS, non-GLs. It's a very long-term approach to think about. And in the last meeting, I actually said is that, you know, we got very smart brains in this entire, this whole district is full of very smart people. Can we actually collaborate, talk to each other, not just, you know, get into a formal presentation and passing papers to each other? Let's sit together and run our brains, hey, I'm here with your say, I understand what you say. Can we actually come to some resolution worth of something that's going to be more helpful for each of us? That's my objective.
Okay. We are going to have a board coffee, that, I mean, it's just an informal gathering that we could, well, I don't know what you're actually looking for, but.
I mean, there are, I'm, I'm actually very spent, you know, full day with anybody who's ready to spend some time.
Send me a letter from the board.
Part eleven, then, then you get a letter.
But we got to look about, you know, this whole decision holistically, not just make a decision based on, you know, some number of crunching, or my energy, essentially. So let's try to look at very long-term as well. The sustainability is.
I, I agree a hundred percent. Thank you.
(Applause).
I'm Shannon Hamburg, I live at thirty-seven Allen Road, and I have a question regarding transportation safety. Right now, my daughter's in Hagan, and she is eligible to take the bus, but I drive her, and like many other moms, give her the morning and the afternoon. And actually, she'll be in Nassau, I know, it's a much smaller parking lot for drop-offs. Has DOT come? Has DOT come in and looked, are you gonna have to come and look at the change in traffic patterns, especially in the Nassau neighborhood, for like increased driver, like parents who are driving?
We have not contacted DOT regarding that. What we did look at was making sure that number of buses are coming in in the morning or Saturday because of fuel commitment, first thing in the morning, or fuel commitment ten or fifteen minutes later, according to the plan. But we haven't talked to DOT about maybe that people will be coming this whole area.
Right. Just because now, like I know at Hagan, it's a straight run right into B. G. and there's a lot of people that just don't use the bus system, myself. And I know it can't understand Nassau, but because they're smaller streets and you have a lot more people that walk, is that a concern?
There are actually quite a lot of students we have brought up now in Nassau despite the fact that it's close to the.
I mean, we should take a look at it. It's a point. It's a little bit about Hagan. It's, well, it's a little different in Nassau than Hagan, but it still can tack up.
The, the amount of walkers actually decreased quickly.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying it actually decreased after a while, the amount that we normally had.
Just, just, I mean, I know there's a lot of people that are eligible to take the bus, but they, you know, like myself, I don't have my kid on the bus, so I drive them. And in, you know, probably years on Monday each school, so, you know, I got a fifteen-minute window to school and just spend all the time in the afternoon. Every day, someone's gonna be late to do your stuff because I can't get to full school this time. So, you know, I was concerned, so like kids were walking and, you know, other parents were dropping off, that's a look at.
Something that's been looked at. Thank you.
Good evening, Hannah Shaw, twenty-nine and five. I wanted to respond to Board Member Chimento. January ninth, he had mentioned that if you either way, you want to go to a grade school and back to that, we're hoping that you go would be more favorable option. And tonight, he would reiterate that point again. So I wanted to just bring to your attention our distinguished former president, Franklin Delano Roosevelt, who is a local, of course, hero of ours, once said that the last thing that America should ever be concerned on is the education of our children. So the question we have for you tonight is, I'd like to know what due diligence was done before GLS was looked at. I'd like to know, I mean, you're, you're talking about, this has been in the works for years and years and we're talking about, you know, we look at all these numbers and things. I want to know what the board and the administration looked at specifically before arriving at a decision to come to GLS to solve our fiscal problems? Because as, I'm sorry, I forgot. The downwind reform was backing, his job for a living was to budget and plan three, five years forward, backwards, doing impartial scenarios with reference to fundamental planning and funding principles. And I want to mention this down here before we decided to go to GLS.
I'm not exactly sure what you're looking for other than, yes, you're correct, GLS has been looked at on and off again for many years, but the last time was the committee that came up with some recommendations that didn't fit the threshold. They recommended against GLS because of that. They wanted a number ninety percent or better favorable before they would recommend it. Our reason for going has been a couple things. One is, I think, a lot of what I spoke earlier, as well as the need for some fiscal stability and ability to tweak class sizing and number of grade levels throughout the grade level. So that was the impetus, was the money. And the question arose as to will grade-level schools save us now? And what would that amount be? And what, and at that point, when we put ADIT and SOA and the information came back and then we went further and created more implementation plans after that point, but, you know, the, the whole thing comes down to how can you look one, two, three years down the road in my mind? And again, I don't wanna impose my view on anybody else that sits up here. We are independent, so as you can tell by the book. But the point I say is, I need to have the ability to make changes down the road and I can't do that at drop of hat. I have to have a format in front of me that those changes can be made in a reasonable manner without causing chaos. Some may say that this is chaos, but my point is, is this has been looked at a couple of times. We started very early this year because we knew that this might have to become part of the budget plot for this year, which is why we started GLS before the summer, to ask about, you know, can this be a part of the money we need to save this year? And then what would it look like in future years and can it help there? And that was really the impetus for bringing GLS back into the conversation. And if we couldn't save money, we probably wouldn't be sitting here. But we feel it can and we feel it also has the balancing piece. But go ahead and.
I was just gonna say, I've been doing due diligence for our district to find out what would meet the district's needs as a whole. Wouldn't it make sense to have done a, like, side-by-side comparison over, let's assume we wanna do three years, but an impartial study reviewing different options over the three-year period, GLS ideas, not GLS ideas, to see what fits the district best, present them to the community, get the community's kind of idea about it, and then move forward from there? Because from what you're telling me, none of that was done. There was no impartial study, there was no impartial enrollment or fiscal kind of avenue looked at. GLS has been for the past, what, since 2009, I think Dr. Powell said? Has been the only option looked at. So how do you know? We can't go with a K through A. How do you know we can't resist it? How do you know we can't expand? Or something like that? My, my point is, I'm not advocating one option over another. I'm just suggesting that the community knows that there are numerous options available to the board. You are in a very tight position to the tax cap. We understand that. We do wanna work with you, but we're saying you cannot push GLS on us without having done due diligence. If anybody in this room had gone to their bosses and said, hey, this is the option, this is the only option I looked at, you would've been fired. That's just the bottom line. You have to do your due diligence first. That's all.
[applause]
Patrick, nine in the rising majority. What we wanted to bring up, I, you know, we keep talking about the amount of money that's being saved and in reality, it really comes down to salaries. So we, we're big company to salaries. So there's a lot of ways of doing this that would involve going to grade-level schools where you can save the same amount of money in salaries. Not, not that I'm necessarily supporting that as a way to make cuts, but I, I think it's something we're looking at. But, but I wanna point to another issue that I really believe has been the driving force between, to go to grade-level schools. Back in 2010, when the beginning, some of this discussion took place, I, I would ask everybody in the Sherman, particularly the board, to take a look at the, which is why I have my phone here, because I'm just double-checking the date on the, on the minutes to this. But back in 2010, a discussion came up about why there was a significant difference between the test scores in Hagan and the test scores in Nassau. And an answer was given at the, at the advisory council committee. And it had to do with the quality of teachers was one thing that came up. Administration was discussed. However, it was also said, you know, these are some things we need to look into. One of the giggle on the committee made the comment that, well, you know, I'm not, you know, test score, test scores are not the deal on the end all. Okay, well, so it really doesn't matter because by the time, quote, by the time the kids get to high school, things all level off. Okay? So my question at that point was, well, you know, do they level off? And, and is that really what happens as the, as the years go on? And, and in reality, that isn't what happens. It doesn't level off. And I think you should all take a look at the minutes, in the advisory council minutes. And there was a presentation done at the December meeting, which, which shows through graphs the significant difference between the two schools. So the question that I asked at the time, not having a child in Nassau, was why is that acceptable to the parents in Nassau? Why? And, and I'm, I'm not a believer that test scores are the only measure to see how well students are doing. But it is one measure, and it is a measure that everybody in the state of New York is using. I mean, every website runs to show all the test scores. So what I'm saying to you is, I, in my opinion, I believe one of the motivating factors, and, and there are school districts who have the same similar data that we have. And one of the reasons that they motivate you to go into a grade-level school is so that very early on, you mesh the schools together, so therefore you mitigate any difference is, any significant differences in the test score, but you don't solve the problem. And that's the piece that I think really needs to be looked at there. Because why, you know, I, I ask questions about, you know, there was a comment made a few more weeks ago by somebody up there, and I don't, I apologize for not remembering who, that had to do with, you know, it's socioeconomic. Oh, it's more students with five or four planes. Well, you know, when I asked that question, the answer was, well, you know, it might've been that way at one point, but things have really leveled off. There, you know, it's not a substantial difference. And even if you look at percentages, there's obviously more students at Hagan than there are at Nassau. You know, I wanna know, I, I wanna know why, when you look at the graduating classes back into high school, and you look at the top twenty percent, why are they all coming from Hagan? Even if you, even if you weigh, weighed, you know, based on the numbers, why is that happening? It shouldn't be happening. They're in the same district, creating the same classes, they should be getting the same education. And in my belief, the whole motivating factor for going to grade-level schools is to put kids together sooner. This way, the problem never gets solved. It's swept under the carpet and everybody's, you know, somebody mentioned that the scores will go up. You know, if, once you don't have any changes, the scores stay the same. Well, now what's gonna happen is, and I, I guarantee you, well, the scores will go down. You'll see a difference in, in both schools, the scores will go down. Because the inherent problem has never been addressed. So I implore all of you on the board and everyone in the audience to go to those minutes and take a look at the data, look at the charts. I think you're gonna find that you'll be, you, you won't believe what you're gonna see out there. Now, that was in, in 2010. To me, that's a disturbing fact that really needs to be looked at because that problem has not been addressed. And really, sort of saving salaries, in my opinion, that's the reason why the push for grade-level schools has gone on for the last two years. So I ask you to think about it.
Can I get, uh, two minutes, please?
Uh, yeah. Has anybody else spoken yet? Would like to. I just wanna get everybody a first turn before we go to number two.
I just like, uh, but I'll still wait.
Hi, good evening. I just had a couple very specific questions about the plan. I just, I just, in hopes of finding getting a little better. My opinion is that.